I hereby call to order the public hearing on the budgets for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, August 26, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Please.
Here.
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 Kristen Swanson will introduce the summer enrichment students to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Here we have students from the summer enrichment program. They're going to tell us their names and something that they enjoy doing at summer enrichment, and then they're going to lead us in the pledge.
My name is Maggie, and my favorite thing about summer enrichment was probably doing the TED Talks.
My name is Annalise, and my favorite thing was doing the puzzles in math camp.
My name is Jamie, and my favorite thing about summer school is the TED Talks.
My name is Nadine, and probably my favorite thing was cooking and acting.
My name is Kate, and my favorite thing was probably acting out the character.
My name is Harper, and I like to do acting.
My name is Junie, and I like acting, too.
I'm Zoe, and I like doing acting.
I'm Alex, and I also like doing acting.
My name is Mary Claire, and my favorite thing about summer school is math.
My name is Leila Hodgson, and my favorite thing about summer school this year was having the opportunity to learn about these amazing subjects that I don't get to learn about during the school year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone, I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting, and all are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behavior such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. We'll now go to the budget presentations. Dr. Kriemis Scoly?
Thank you. The Board approved the tentative FY '20 budget at its May 20 meeting. Once presented at the public hearing and upon approval, the proposed budget will be submitted to the ROE and ISB. Our chief school business official, Ellen Crispino, will provide a review.
Thank you, Dr. Kriemis Scoly. As you can see on this slide, the budget's process lasts a large part of the year. In January, we set the budget guidelines, and in the following months, we reviewed the operating budget and the non-operating budget. After the tentative budget was presented in May, the district published notice in the Willmet Life, and the budget was on display for the required 30 days. As we received updated information, we have made a few changes in the operating fund budgets from the tentative budget that was presented in May. Revenue in the operating funds, excluding on behalf revenue, increased by $1,025,000. $579,000 of the increase is due to property tax revenue. The 2018 levy amount was unknown when the budget was presented in May, but was estimated at $14.4 million based on a five-year historical average. Actual new property growth for the 2018 levy was almost $25 million. Interest revenue was also increased; this increased by $137,000. We increased the interest percentage from 1.8% of prior year-end funding balance in the tentative budget to 2% based on current investments and projected interest rates. There was a $240,000 increase for state and federal funding for tuition for outplaced students based on projected enrollment. This is mostly offset by a $194,000 increase in outplaced tuition expenditures. Operating expenditures, including, sorry, excluding the TRS on behalf, increased by $351,000 from the tentative budget. This was due to adding $148,000 for salary and benefits for two teachers based on current enrollment. Also, ISB establishes the TRS on behalf contribution rate each summer. Just as a reminder, this is what the state of Illinois pays toward the teacher pension program on behalf of District 39. This payment is cost neutral to the district at this time, as the expenditures and revenues are equivalent. Money is neither received from the state nor paid out by the district. The district is required to make the accounting entries for this amount in the annual budget. This year, the state changed the calculation for reporting on behalf payments to TRS, which resulted in an entry for $21.7 million for fiscal year 19 actuals compared with a budget of $14.7 million for fiscal year 19. The fiscal year '20 budget of $22 million is based on these higher calculations from fiscal year 19. The operating funds make up 98% of the total revenue budget, and this chart shows the allocation of revenue to the different operating funds. 79% or $50.6 million of all operating fund revenues collected are allocated to the education fund. 14% or $9.3 million are allocated to the operations and maintenance fund for repair, cleaning, maintenance of our buildings, and facility improvement projects. This slide shows the breakout of operating expenditures by fund. As you can see, 83% or $51.6 million of all operating fund expenditures are in the educational fund. Salaries and benefits account for $45.2 million or 88% of the total education fund expenditures. On this slide, you can see a summary of the change in the operating fund balance for fiscal year '20. Total operating fund revenues are budgeted at $64.2 million, and operating fund expenditures are budgeted at $62.1 million. You can see there's other sources and uses of $3.8 million, and this reflects the transfers to the non-operating funds primarily for construction. It includes $3 million in the construction costs at Highcrest for the Library/Media/Technology Center addition, which includes large space air conditioning, as well as a special education classroom renovation, and it also includes a $3.5 million three-classroom addition and renovation at Harper, which is necessary for implementing the kindergarten enrichment program. The construction costs are offset with $4 million budgeted for bond refunding and issue. The utilization of fund balances is necessary to complete these construction projects, resulting in the deficit of $1.7 million in the operating funds for fiscal year '20. We are projecting a total fund balance of $37.7 million in the operating funds at the end of fiscal year '20. This is 60.8% of the fund balance, sorry, this is 68.8%, 60.8% of the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, which will allow the district to maintain its current quality of educational programs and achieve the Board's goal to maintain operating fund balances of at least 40% of the operating fund budget. On this next slide, we have the non-operating fund summary. The overall non-operating budget is a combination of debt service, capital projects, and life safety funds. The estimates are for combined revenues and other sources of $9.5 million, including the $7 million transfer from operations and maintenance fund for construction. Expenditures of $9.3 million include a $7 million of construction and $2.3 million of debt service payments. This is projected to yield an ending non-operating fund balance of $1.8 million. On the next slide, you can see the all-fund summary. This shows a deficit of $1.6 million in total for all funds. Again, the anticipated deficit is due to one-time capital projects budgeted in fiscal year '20 utilizing fund balance. The all-funds fund balance at the end of fiscal year '20 is budgeted to be $39.6 million. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Thank you. Thank you. The Willmet Community Special Education Agreement?
So, the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement is a flow-through entity, and our revenue and expenses are equal to $192,000. Funds flow in and then out to member districts, which include Avoca and District 39. Based on changes to the state funding, the IDA grant funds will now flow to individual districts instead of into the co-op for fiscal year '20. Which is, there you can see. The next step is the process, is the final adoptions of the budget this evening. Once the budgets are approved, they will be submitted to the ROE, the Cook County Clerk, and ISB. Then the process will begin all over again, and a levy estimate will be presented in October, and the final levy will be submitted to the Board for approval in November. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Thank you. This takes us to our first public comment period. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the Board regarding the presentation of the budgets. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name, community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes.
Okay. Hello, I'm Nina Friedman. I'm a parent of an eighth grader and a sixth grader in this district. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker. I understand via hearsay that the incident in the Willmet Junior High bathroom at the end of last year was addressed by school and police. I'm wondering what that means, since there was no follow-up communication to the parents or the community. Was it the bomb threat that was addressed? Was it the anti-Semitic language or graffiti that was addressed? The condemnation from the previous superintendent and you all as a school board via emails and at our last Board meeting led me to believe that finally, an incident like this, because it certainly wasn't the first, was being taken seriously. By not communicating that there was an outcome with consequences for this type of an act, you are sending a message to the people in this district that you are apathetic, leaving the door open for more incidents like this to occur. The community needs to be assured this type of hate is not tolerated in our district. I have to say that I was, that as upset I was about the anti-Semitic graffiti, I was heartbroken listening to the parents at the last Board meeting who shared the extensive bullying their child endured at the bus stop, on the bus, in school, on the playground. And I hope each one of you was equally as heartbroken, because that was just really, really disappointing to hear, that they'd gone to the teachers and the school administration and the principals and on and on and on, and nothing happened, nothing stopped. They left the district, they moved away because their child was bullied too much, and that's just heartbreaking. So I bring that up in conjunction with what I said earlier, because it's all intertwined, and we must do better. So, I, you know, I read what all of us have read and what you said last time at the Board meeting, but we want to know what? We want to know the specifics. I saw the handbook, I saw the policy about the different things that happened, but who determines that? When does it get past number one, where you call the parents? I know parents that have been called multiple times, and they never get to step two. Why? Who determines that? And why don't we know? So there has to be something that is better, that sends a message to our community that this is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have three kids in the district, and I'm also a graduate. I've lived here my whole life. So I also wanted to speak about the incident at the end of last year. I really want to thank the Board for all of the reflection I heard at the last meeting. I stayed for the whole meeting, and I was really glad to hear that the issue was raised again in several contexts later in the meeting. However, it seems like that that reflection has led to talking and statements, and what we really wanted to see was public action, and the public wants should know what that action is. The people on this Board, from everything I heard, are good and open-hearted people. I think the hatred that causes a junior high student, a child, to make threats against Jewish students, whether it's on a bathroom stall, or in a yearbook, or straight to their face, are so foreign to your understanding that it is hard to know what to do. But I think the lack of public statement regarding the consequence, it indicates that there are no consequences. And I understand your hesitation to come down on, this is a child, and I understand that. But enough innocent children have been made to feel unsafe at school, and this Board is meant to provide for their safety. And you have to understand that this is a problem creeping into our community. This past Tuesday, I attended the zoning Board meeting at the Village Hall with some other people from my synagogue to support their effort to start a preschool for 15 children. It wasn't supposed to be a big deal. The Village said it was procedural. We were shocked when several neighbors referred to the congregation as "those people." The worst was one woman who said that if the preschool was approved, it would cause more of those people to come into Willmet. These are some of the parents, and not a lot of them. I think most people are like the people in this room, and would be horrified. But this is an issue in our community. And we're not looking for details regarding that individual student. It should be kept private. Nothing good will come of making that student public. But we would like to be known that Jewish children in our community are not going to be victimized for their faith without consequence, and that no child in our community is going to be threatened for any reason without a swift consequence, and that consequence needs to be known, so the next time someone thinks about threatening a child in our schools, they know it will not be tolerated. And the failure to speak out publicly indicates that it is tolerated.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to come forward?
Thank you. You would think I'd know that by now. Mine's on a stick like yours. Good evening, Joel Kerstman. I live at 2615 Green Leaf Avenue down the street. I have a son entering the junior high, and so this feels very relevant to me. The previous comments are also new to me. To understand that took place at the zoning Board obviously catches my attention. But I'm really here just as a pinch hitter for my wife, my better half, my better two-thirds, for those who are keeping score, you know that to be true. But I just wanted to make a me-too statement. I don't have anything substantive to add to what has been said previously. I do think that as a community, we can't brush things under the carpet, and that we need to follow through and see this through to fruition with some sort of closure on the event and to have it communicated publicly. And so with that, I just also offer a word of welcome to the superintendent. I haven't had a chance to welcome you, so welcome to our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Does the Board have any questions or comments on the budget? I request a motion to adjourn to the public bond hearing.
I move to adjourn to the public bond hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Motion carries by general consent. We are now adjourned to the public bond hearing. I hereby call to order the public bond hearing before the Board of Education for Willmet Public School District 39, this Monday, August 26, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Please.
Here.
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 We're here for the conduct of the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell $5 million of working cash fund bonds for the purposes of increasing the district's working cash fund. Dr. Kriemis Scoly?
Thank you. As background, on June 17, the Board adopted a resolution to announce the public hearing on the district's intent to issue $5 million working cash fund bonds for the sole purpose of making capital improvements to the district's facilities. The Facilities Development Committee reviews recommended facility improvements on an ongoing basis. The Board previously approved two construction projects to begin this summer with a combined cost of $7 million at Highcrest and at Harper Schools. Renovations for kindergarten enrichment are planned for Central Elementary School in the summer of 2020. Construction and renovations for kindergarten enrichment at Ramona and Mackenzie Elementary Schools are part of the second phase of the kindergarten enrichment implementation plan. Other facility improvements being considered include more air conditioning of large spaces such as cafeterias, auditoriums, and gyms. In addition to construction for new initiatives, it is important to repair and maintain the district's existing facilities, including windows, roofs, and boilers.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the Board regarding the bond presentation. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name, community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes. Does the Board have any questions or comments about the bonds? I request a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the resolution authorizing a permanent interfund transfer. Oh, whoops, sorry. I'd like to adjourn to a public hearing on the resolution to authorize a permanent interfund transfer. Request a motion now.
I move to adjourn to the permanent interfund transfer hearing. Second.
May I have a second? Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Motion carried by general consent. We are now adjourned to the next public hearing. The next public hearing is a public hearing on the resolution to authorize a permanent interfund transfer. I hereby call to order this public hearing on the resolution authorizing a permanent interfund transfer of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, for Monday, August 26, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Please.
Here.
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 Dr. Kriemis Scoly, can you address the resolution authorizing a permanent interfund transfer?
Certainly can. As background, the administration is requesting approval for a permanent interfund loan of $4 million from the education fund to the operation and maintenance fund. This transfer is to pay for construction projects. This permanent transfer notice was published in the newspaper on August 8, and after the public hearing, the Board can approve the resolution.
Would the audience like to address the Board, excuse me, regarding the permanent interfund transfer resolution? Please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes. If it's your first time addressing the Board, or one minute if you've previously spoken.
Hi, I'm Michael Himmelfarb. I have three, one kid left in the district, two have already gone through the district. We live in Willmet. I looked at the agenda, I don't know if I'm going to have any other opportunity to make a statement, so I figured I'd use this time, even though I'm not talking about the interdepartment transfer. I wanted to get back to the issue that the other members brought up a couple of minutes ago. I know you guys don't have any obligation whatsoever to respond to us, and I don't see it anywhere else on the agenda where you will respond to us, but I just wanted to make my feelings known, that I was heartened by the amendment or the resolution last meeting, but I agree with the other members of the community, that I just, I really feel like there needs to be some more very specific action that's going to be taken, or we need to be, at least understand what that action is going to be. I'm a big proponent in having consequences for this type of activity, and I know most parents think that if your fourth grader gets punished for something, it's the end of the world, but it isn't. I mean, I have kids in high school, and I know that's a distant memory, what happened to them back in grade school. But the importance is that it teaches the kids a lesson, it teaches them responsibility and accountability, and quite frankly, it teaches the parents that, too. And so this is the perfect opportunity, it's a very low-risk environment, to have specific consequences for actions that the kids take that they shouldn't be taking. And so I really encourage you guys to do something a little more tangible and meaningful along this regard, because I know these things that happened, not only to the Jewish community, but others, as you've heard. And it just seems completely unacceptable to me that you guys would let that keep going without some sort of response.
Thank you. Are there other people who would like to address the Board? Does the Board have any questions or comments on the resolution? Having no further business, I request a motion to resume, oh, we're now going to adjourn the public hearing on the resolution to authorize a permanent interfund transfer. Having no further business, I request a motion to resume the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting.
May I have a second?
A second, sorry. Sure.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carried by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. I hereby resume this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, for Monday, August 26, 2019, and the time is 7:29. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17, 2019, regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes for the Monday, June 17, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
And executive session.
And executive session.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the Board on any topic. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes. If it's your first time addressing the Board, one minute if you've previously spoken.
My name is Tracy Kearney, and I live in Glumby, Illinois. First, welcome back, Board, and welcome to the table, Dr. Kriemis Scoly. I hope your transition has been as smooth as stepping into any new position can be. I have one question for the Board, and would appreciate an answer tomorrow if you can't answer tonight. When specifically was the teacher's contract signed in June presented for public review, and where was it published? Specifically, where would a constituent go to find that contract to review ahead of the BOE meeting? In this case, the June, the third week of June BOE meeting, where unanimously passed it? Secondly, I would like to make a request that both the teachers, the WEA collective bargaining, well, that's the WEA collective bargaining contract, the SEIU contract and the administrator contracts be made available on the D-39 website in a more conspicuous place or more intuitive place than where they are now. It's somewhere under the business office. Like, it was difficult for me to find. It took me at least 20 minutes to find it, and a simple keyword search like "teacher contract" did not bring me there. Well, I was fortunate enough to participate on that side of the mic, and therefore knew to search for WEA collective bargaining unit contract. I would be willing to bet a majority do not. On the homepage, integrated as part of the dashboard, or at the very least under the BOE tab, would be a huge help and service to those you represent, so they can do their best to remain engaged and communicate their needs. This is a spontaneous comment, and this is just a comment. It's in reference to selling the $500 million in working cash fund bonds. I heard that that's to do to build central school, build out kindergarten in 2020. Simple question here. I'd like to know the reasoning behind the decision and ask why this decision was made ahead of realizing the actual interest in full-day kindergarten at the price of somewhere around $60,000. at the price of somewhere around $6,200, as was promised when the board voted to spend the several millions for Highcrest and Ramona to see if further construction was even needed. That's it, thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you. Are there any others who'd like to make a comment at this time? Then we'll move to board reports. Facility development, Ms. Sternwiler.
Thank you, Ms. Papes. In our Committee of the Whole, we met to discuss the summer 2019 construction. We had our updates, and one of those updates was a lengthy discussion of the bids at the moment on the, for Central School kindergarten enrichment, and we looked at several possibilities for that renovation of that space. We discussed different possibilities, and we looked at, actually, the possibility of including, whether or not to include HVAC work in that, in that as a possible addition to it, because of the value of that over time, it was on our list of things to do anyway. But we are waiting for final cost estimates to come back, so that we can make some decisions, and that was, that was what we have looked at so far. We're expecting those bids to go down, actually, so we made no decisions, we were just looking to see where they came in for the moment. And those, Central is expected, it's, as of now, we reviewed the timelines, we looked at a lot of the calendar, we spent a lot of time reviewing the construction calendars and kind of the shifting calendar based on needs and requirements of the different projects we have in the air right now, and how a lot of the township's needs are shifting our focus because of things going on on Locust and some other projects on the horizon, not too distant, and how they may push our projects around. So a lot of things may change on our calendar, and we have to be cognizant of that, because we can't all be in the same place at the same time. So we'll keep an eye on, on our, all of our projects, and the Park District, and the township, and we'll see how those all fall into place. The other thing that we did discuss was Phase Two of the Highcrest Garden. The, we've chosen the Lakota Group to do that project, and we're very excited about that. It was chosen because they love to work with our community, and the students, and the community volunteers that have worked so hard over these past years. They're very excited to work with them, and so they're going to begin work, and then we'll be, I think, meeting about Phase Three sometime in the not-so-distant future to begin talking about that. And that, I think, is the FDC report.
Thank you. Now we'll go to school finance, Mr. Cesaretti.
Thank you, President Papes. Do we like that one? Okay. So, the school finance committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole on Monday, August 19, and discussed quite a few things at 8:00 in the morning. The first thing was our strategy policies around the property tax valuation matters, and when we would intervene. We had quite a lengthy discussion on that. The second thing was we met with our bond advisor, Elizabeth Hennessy at Raymond James, who advised us on the best strategy to go out for, I think, four million, or, yeah, four million of bonds that we're going to do in 2020. So, oh, thank you, five million, thank you, Ellen. And getting to Ellen's part, which was the rest of the meeting, thank you, Ellen, by the way, for everything. So Ellen did, we also discussed the budget, and the Wixie budget, and the permanent interfund transfer, I think, in fairly good detail, and do appreciate your efforts on that, by the way, for making it easy for us. And the annual tax compliance. And the last thing we discussed was a new reporting requirement, I can't remember who it's by, but anyway, it's a state reporting requirement where we're required as a board, or as a district, to report on what they're calling site-based reporting, so the cost per student based on the schools. So we spent some time thinking through, there was one outlier school, Ramona, and we were thinking through kind of why the, the cost per pupil is more, substantially more than the other, the other schools, but this is work that's ongoing. I thought that was a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Strategy committee, Mr. Steen.
Great. The strategy committee met at the same time with the Committee of the Whole. We went over, Ms. Lee took us through a number of strategy initiatives that we have ongoing. Many of them are familiar to people who have been keeping up with our strategy discussions, but I'd like to highlight three in particular. The first one that I'd like to highlight is the strategy point around culture of inclusion. This one has gotten a lot of, so we had a strategy initiative to improve our culture of inclusion since, I don't know, probably two or three years ago. This is the fourth year, thank you. And that obviously has become even more important and more, at the forefront of our thinking as we've seen some of the events over the past year, some of which were referred to earlier tonight. I think I was extremely excited about the passion with which the administration reported on the efforts that we were making to improve our social and emotional learning, and to improve the way we're thinking about educating our students to include other students regardless of differences. I think the board, several other board comments also made comments that they were extremely excited by the presentation, and by the passion with which the administration was going after that. So that was very exciting. The next one that I would highlight is individualized learning, which we may change the name of, but this is a agglomeration of several former strategy initiatives, including one-to-one learning, and some of our growth metrics. We are moving forward on that, and will continue to improve our ability to focus learning on the individual needs of each child in an effort to improve outcomes in both achievement and growth for all of our children. The final discussion that took a little bit more time was our assessment around report cards, and that's been a popular topic of discussion with the community. We are moving forward on understanding how we should implement that, and understanding the feedback that we're getting from the community. There were several other topics, but those were the main three that I wanted to highlight. Thank you very much.
Legislative update, Ms. Stone.
Yes, ISB first. The triple I conference is sadly not too far on the horizon, now that school is starting soon. The triple I conference is coming up in November, and in preparation for that, between, sometime in the not-so-distant future, between now and then, ISB will be presenting their resolutions that they plan to have us all vote on at the joint annual conference. When we receive them, we'll review them, and discuss them, and decide whether or not they are resolutions that are significant to our district, and if we are going to vote on them as a board, and if we choose to do so, we will vote, and I, and I will take that vote to the triple I conference, and we will be represented. So I just want to make everyone aware that that is what is happening. We are aware of, we're waiting for the resolutions, so. And one more thing is that, just a reminder, is that Wednesday, October 16, is the North Cook Division meeting. It actually looks really, really interesting, so I encourage you guys to go. It's presented by B. Young, the founder and president, and it's, the topic is equity and educational imperative. It sounds very interesting. So, that's it.
Ms. Stone.
Yes, three items of note. House Bill 2078 was signed into law, which is, increases the minimum teacher salaries in Illinois, incrementally over the next three years until it lands at $40,000 a year in school year 20, 23 to 24. After that, it's scheduled to go up by CPI. House Bill 822 was signed into law and became effective on August 19, which allows school districts to maintain a supply of undesignated glucagon medication for the treatment of diabetic symptoms. It requires reporting to parents and health providers within 24 hours of administration. And finally, Senate Bill 1658 was signed into law and becomes effective on January 1, 2020, which allows ISB to award grants to school districts to support school safety and security, including professional development, safety-related upgrades to schools, equipment, metal detectors and x-ray machines, and facilities, including school-based health centers.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to our information items. Dr. Kremis Gole.
Thank you. First of all, in terms of written communication, the board did not receive any written communication since our last meeting. I do have several administrative announcements, and I have some notes that I'll refer to as I'm going through. So first of all, I'm very pleased to report that tonight's meeting marks the completion of my first phase of the transition plan as new superintendent. Over the past six months, I have spent time meeting with leaders and staff, touring schools, learning about our goals and initiatives, and we certainly have a lot on our plate, and getting to know the community better as well. I continue to be impressed by the passion and commitment of each and every person associated with this school district. We are very fortunate to have a community of educators, leaders, parents, and partners who are all committed to supporting and serving the growth and development of the youth of this community. I look forward to a wonderful kickoff of the school year and the exciting work ahead. As I mentioned kickoff, we are in the thick of our opening days right now. District 39 welcomed all new teachers during our new teacher orientation Monday, August 19, through Thursday, August 22. Orientation topics ranged from our district mission and vision to professional expectations, district curriculum, instructional practices, student and school safety, and mentorship support for other, from other colleagues, excuse me. Our paraprofessional training day was held on August 23, and those topics included many as well, such as supporting students in our classrooms, CPR training, and much more. It was a wonderful welcome back for our paraprofessionals and support staff. This year's All Staff Institute Day began today with our building-based meetings focused on mandated staff training, information about instructional requirements for national holidays, teacher evaluation processes, professionalism, and other building-based topics. And I will simply add that I know some of our principals are not yet, have not yet joined us this evening because they are out at schools doing some further welcoming activities. Our principals have spent a great deal of time building out some activities with our teachers to ensure that our students and families feel welcomed back to school this year. Tomorrow, we look forward to the district-wide welcome back greeting for all staff at Willmet Junior High. Immediately following welcoming remarks, teachers will engage in breakout sessions focused on preparing for students' arrival on that first half-day of school on Wednesday, August 28. We are looking forward to welcoming our students back, and each of our schools, as I mentioned, have some special activities planned to help welcome our students back with celebration. As we build our school communities and connections, we are focusing the start of the school year on building these connections with our school families right from the start. We mentioned summer construction just a little bit as we talked about facilities development. In terms of an update, this summer construction at Highcrest Middle School included a library-media technology center addition with large space air conditioning and special education classroom renovation. The special education classroom renovation will be ready to start as the school year gets started, and the library-media technology center will finish before winter break, so there is ongoing construction at Highcrest. In addition, construction at Harper Elementary School is a three-classroom addition and renovation. Harper Elementary School construction is necessary for implementing the kindergarten enrichment program, and this project will be finished by August of 2020, so there is some targeted, ongoing construction at Harper as well. We've heard a little bit this evening about school culture, and certainly at the Committee of the Whole, we talked about it in terms of strategy. I wanted to touch upon that this evening, first of all, for the board, although I know the board has been apprised of this at the Committee of the Whole meeting, but also for our community who continues to seek additional information regarding some of our efforts in this regard. So this year, you will see a significant focus on continuing to build and strengthen a strong District 39 culture of connection and belonging for all students and staff. This is a key focus for us within our strategic plan, as Mark mentioned, and of critical importance as we seek to fulfill our District 39 mission of learning and growing together. Our board and our community will hear about this focus throughout the school year as we strengthen our commitment to nurturing an inclusive environment in which all students and all staff feel a sense of connection and belonging as we all learn and grow together. This is exciting work, and it is important work for our students, for our staff, and for our entire community. As the board learned during our recent Committee of the Whole meeting, our District 39 leaders have been working hard to develop and refine plans to support this ongoing work. I will mention in particular our 5-8 Administrator, Kelly Jackson, and our Administrator for Curriculum and Instruction, Katie Lee, have both worked hand-in-hand throughout the summer to really guide this process and ensure that we have included a variety of new trainings for our teachers, for our administrators, as well as support and learning for our students throughout. I would like to provide a brief snapshot of the important work and the positive work that is ahead of us. In support of the resolution against hate adopted by the Board of Education last spring, and this important work that represent, that, the important work that it represents for our students and for our community, we've been planning several different steps to support our students and staff in creating a more positive, inclusive culture across not only our 5-8 campus, but our district as a whole. Research shows that setting up a strong community built on relationships of connectedness can help prevent incidents such as hate in schools while supporting tremendous academic growth and accomplishments, ultimately, I think, the goal that we all share together. While we have had many things in place for the, in the past, over the past several years, the need has arisen to have a more concerted and systematic effort to tackle different areas of concern that arise within our communities, and to, excuse me, and to support our students and staff as they respond to, and work together to prevent these incidents in the future. Accomplishing this work while providing a sense of belonging and support within their community is the important work ahead of us. So across our schools, classroom teachers have worked over the past many years within their classrooms to build community in their own individual style, to teach social-emotional learning standards using resources such as Second Step, as well as using other resources to support this work. This year, we are building on these efforts by planning a series of themes that will be followed throughout the year to build community, to foster an environment of inclusion, and to help students and families understand that hate will not be tolerated in District 39. Themes such as building community, relationships first, and we all belong, will be the basis for lessons and activities from resources such as ADL, teaching tolerance, facing history and ourselves, and Second Step, among others. We know that through building a safe, united community of trust where students can share their opinions and emotions, where teachers and students can enter, then teachers and students can enter into a vibrant discussion that deals with these topics, and hopefully prevents the types of bullying and teasing that we have experienced, supports tolerance, inclusion, and a sense of community. There will be events and lessons for students, there will be lots of professional development and collaboration for our staff, and there will be supports for parents as we partner together in this process. We are excited about this work ahead and about strengthening our community of learners to support tremendous growth among all. This is really critical work for us. We will continue to communicate about this. It is ongoing work, and I want to commend our administration and our entire team for putting together the plans that will be rolled out this year. Along those lines, I also want to emphasize our commitment to safety and security, which I think is also some of the elements that have been touched upon at this meeting and at others that I've heard. at others that I've heard. Throughout last year and ongoing through this past spring and summer, District 39 has remained focused on supporting the safety and security of our students and our schools. We have continued this work as we reviewed our safety and crises protocols, strengthened security measures at our schools, and reviewed our practices to support safe schools for all. In addition, we have thoroughly reviewed our crisis plan. Throughout last year, we had three crisis committee meetings where we discussed the language in each section. The committee included a cross-section of staff, of representatives from Willmet Police Department and from the Fire Department. Staff today received some early review of these plans, and emergency drills are already scheduled for the first months of school. I will also add that you'll see some revision to some of the language that's in our parent handbook around the consequences that students will receive if, if, if they're not following the rules and the expectations that we've set forth within our district. We want to support our students to learn and grow. We want to partner with our families to support our students as well, but we also want to be clear about the expectations and the consequences that we have. And I know that at our 5-8 campus in particular, there'll be some detailed review of that as the school year gets kicked off. I'll pause there in case there's any questions before I go into the FOIA report.
Board members, are there any questions? Ms. Sternwiler?
Not so much a question, but I just do want to emphasize that after hearing the report from Kelly at the Committee of the Whole, which was really extensive, and then now what you've just added, some of what you've just added to it, I was really, really pleased because I had, there was silence for a while, and I know it was such a hard, it was a transition. I mean, you were moving from Ray to you, and there's been a lot of change. So to have accomplished a lot of this in the midst of change. I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. This is based on, referring to the report on, on, on the culture of, sorry, culture of inclusion. I'm so sorry. Specifically in the culture of inclusion. But, yeah, so in the midst of all that change, I just truly, truly appreciated that there, there was in fact as much follow-through, if not more than, it's what we asked for. It was actually, it was what we asked you to do, and, and I really feel like, well, I just look forward to seeing it continue from, from here. So thank you for that. I'm excited to see what, what comes next, I guess.
Other board members?
Okay, I will move on then with the report of the Freedom of Information Act requests. The district received several FOIA requests. We received a request from Tanner F. of K-12 Transportation Research requesting all alternative student transportation contracts, from Jennifer Smith Richards of the Chicago Tribune and Jody S. Cohen of ProPublica Illinois requesting photos of timeout spaces and floor plan schematic designs for ITO spaces within our schools, from Tim Lysenring of Empower Illinois, who requested course and enrichment offerings at Ramona Elementary and at Highcrest Middle Schools, from Gerardo Mendez, construction analyst for Indiana, Illinois, and Iowa Foundation of Fair Contracting, who requested the three lowest bid packages for Highcrest Middle School Phase II construction and to whom contracts were awarded, including start and end dates. And finally, from Bethany Simpson of Smart Procure, who submitted a commercial FOIA requesting all purchasing records from March 19th, 2019 to present.
Then let's move on to our strategic plan updates.
Thank you. We've, we've talked quite a bit about this, this evening, but on this evening's agenda is the response to the Community Review Committee Report, the CRC report. So this evening, we present to the board our response to the Community Review Committee Report. This is the superintendent's response to last year's work, which was focused on mobile learning in grades K through 4. The CRC report was presented to the Board of Education in May of 2019. The report details the 2018-19 CRC's recommendations regarding mobile learning in grades K through 4. The recommendations were presented by the superintendent to all administrators and then were subsequently accepted as part of the 2019-2020 strategic plan. So that's part of that goal area that we discussed relative to mobile learning. The important findings of this report and its related recommendations have been incorporated into our planning for expanding mobile learning within our elementary schools and the associated professional development and parent partnerships that will support strong classroom practices in these regards. As the board is aware, we reviewed the preliminary goals, action steps, and metrics for the, this year's strategic plan at our recent Committee of the Whole meeting, and we look forward to presenting the full plan to the board, to the Board of Education in September.
Thank you. Moving on to annual business.
Sorry, were there any questions related to the CRC report? Sorry about that. That's okay. Excuse me.
Were there any questions? Okay. Moving on to annual business.
That means I get to speak again. So under annual business, you'll see the enrollment update, the overall classroom assignments for this school year. The overall homeroom FTE has reduced by .5 since the 2018-19 school year, demonstrating a very slight decline in overall enrollment. Since the May board report on staffing and additional section of PM kindergarten has been added at Harper, Mackenzie, and Ramona. Additionally, a first-grade section was added at Ramona, and second-grade classroom section was added at Mackenzie. These additions were due to enrollment surpassing our class guidelines at those grade levels. Heather, is there anything additional you'd like to add? Any questions?
Board members? Mr. Penziger?
I had two, two minor questions that you may be able to answer. We can get information later. Normally, we see an uptick from kindergarten to first grade. Are, are we seeing the same type of increase, or has it changed in any way?
Heather, would you be able to answer that?
Yep, we see, we have seen an increase again this year. It's pretty consistent from parents that choose a full-day kindergarten option elsewhere and then enroll for the first time as first graders.
Okay. And because it's kind of the start of the flow through the, the rest of the years, I think it's something that we keep coming back to that, that Willmet District 39 is, it's worked hard and, and sees, one of the outputs is that we have a consistent number of students, which a lot of different school districts don't, and that's a sign of health and stability for the schools. Because once that starts to drop off, there's all sorts of ramifications just look a little bit north of us for some of those, those things. Given that, for grade one in particular, you know, I know we have a total number, delta, but for grade one, is the number this year versus last year, do we have that, is it approximately the same, up or down?
Number of students or number of classrooms?
Students.
I would need to pull that for you.
I, I figured that, but if you could get back to me on that, because again, that's, that's probably a better indicator of the, the trend lines than just the total number because we've had some big classes that have kind of rolled through, and there's a lot of different deltas from that. Okay, thank you.
And I would simply add, in addition to, thank you for acknowledging the strong enrollment that we continue to realize here in the Willmet Public Schools. I think we continue to see a pretty significant and noteworthy amount of move-in students. I know over the summer, we had quite a number of enrollments, new students and new families choosing Willmet Public Schools, and we're really proud of that as well, but it has caused for some last-minute enrollments and a few last-minute class-section adds, and so we appreciate everyone's support on that.
Yeah, if I could, how many? I remember the number, the numbers I've heard was something like 60 or something in the past. Does that number make sense?
Do you mean the number of students who moved into our area?
Yeah, right.
I think we'd probably have to look up that number, Heather. You don't have that number off the top of your head. But again, there were a couple of sections, as I mentioned previously, that were added as a result. So we'll go ahead and get those numbers out to the board.
Thank you. I have an idea for a chart that would help me understand this better, so if you would come back to me later, that would be great.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I can read your mind. I think I might know what that chart looks like.
Other board members? Okay. Annual tax compliance notification.
Annually, the business manager will review the district's contracts and records to determine that the tax advantage obligations comply with the applicable federal tax requirements. Ellen, anything to add?
Just quickly, this system establishes the due diligence practices and sets responsibility to maintain records in the event the IRS contacts the district. The IRS has an active audit program regarding tax-exempt bond issues, so adopting, maintaining, and complying with adequate record-keeping practices will help the district answer any IRS questions should an audit arise. The district is currently in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the fiscal year 2019 Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report.
Thank you. And again, this is a required annual report detailing the salaries and benefits of our administrators as well as of our teachers. This information is presented this evening to the board and is also posted on the District 39 website. Heather, any additional comments?
No.
Board members, are there any questions? Annual review of serious safety hazard findings.
Thank you. School code requires the Board of Education to annually review and reaffirm the safety hazard findings previously approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation. The district has an approved safety hazard along Glenview Road at Big Tree Lane. It is important to understand that safety hazards only provide District 39 minimal funding from the state, and additionally, the district is not required to waive fees charged to families. This practice was discontinued in 2006. However, District 39 continues to offer transportation to all students in our district. Ellen, anything additional to add?
No.
Board members, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Board Policy Review.
Thank you. So as the board is aware, Section 5 and 8 of the board policies will be reviewed this year. There are 10 policies from Section 5 that are up for review this evening and for first reading. These policies were last reviewed in 2015. As a result, there are some suggested revisions, but there does not appear to be a significant need for revision due to legal requirements or as a result of changes in practice. We did receive some feedback regarding revisions from board members who have already started to review these policy proposals, and those are highlighted in yellow for board consideration.
Board member, are there any comments or discussions about the first read on these policies?
Yeah, I, I do. On 5:20, making a complaint, I really like this new yellow, and I'm impressed that it's there and it wasn't there before. I'm surprised. So a board member did that?
Thank you for highlighting that, yes. So the yellow highlights represent suggestions that were made by board members prior to this first reading, and so we've, we have considered those and where appropriate, made those adjustments into the policy for first reading this evening. And so they're certainly up for discussion, and we'd appreciate any feedback the board might have this evening. But I would like to compliment Erin Stone on her very thorough review of the policies.
Well done. Yeah, so I was gonna ask you, Superintendent Kremis Goli, so, so our process is to have our attorneys look at these? And, yep?
Yes, that's correct. So we review them first. We are a participant in the press policy service of the IASB. We, so they make some suggestions to us. We administratively review those, compare those recommendations with our previously-approved policies. Once we have administratively looked at those, we do ask our attorneys to review those as well. Sometimes there's some nuances that we may not be as well aware of, and our attorneys can assist us with that. And then we provide them to the board for their, for your first reading, and occasionally there's some additional information that is suggested for consideration. So we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Oh, just since we're establishing kind of a little bit of a new way of doing this, I want to ask a question. Would you prefer that we do what Erin did and submit it to you so that you can have the lawyers answer some questions before you give us the yellow line, or do you want us to ask questions first?
I think our preference would be to submit those considerations to us so that we can review them and offer some additional administrative insight and possibly consult with our attorneys. That does help us to ensure that we can maintain the timeline of first reading and second reading. But with that being said, we don't ever want to quiet discussion, and so if there is a need, even if it's this evening, that's what first reading is for. And so if there's some suggested revisions or just some areas you'd like us to explore a little further, either administratively or with our attorneys, this is absolutely the time for us to accomplish that.
Other board members? Oh, Mr. Zane?
Well, I, I did just want, there was, there were two things on 5:20 that, there were two things that I wanted to ask about.
Colon 20?
20, sorry, 20, sorry. I always get that. And there were just things that I wanted to, and I, I just want to put it out there and maybe we can. Hello? Oh, there. All right. So under sexual harassment prohibited, third paragraph says the school district will take reasonable remedial and corrective measures. I, what does that mean? And, you know, a lot of times we say things, I find that, I find that we say things in these policies, and I find myself asking a lot of times, what are we talking about? And that was one of the times where I read through this and I said that, that means nothing. So either, to me, we either need to somehow define that or define a limit for that, because not only what does it mean, but the next question for me was, and decide, as decided by whom? So it just, there's a bunch of questions that immediately came to mind when I read that, and I find that problematic because it just sits there for me. So I know that's maybe a larger question than we might want to tackle right at this moment, but that was a problematic area for me. And the one other, and we could discuss it now, or, I thought I'd just throw that one out there. But the other one that I found problematic in this, in this particular policy was under making a complaint. It's just two areas that I found, the, well, there was one paragraph that I, I couldn't understand why it was even in there. It's the second paragraph, actually. I guess maybe just because it seemed, it seemed so obvious, I guess, maybe? Or maybe it seemed not obvious. It seemed unnecessary. If someone is making a complaint, then they're making a complaint. So there's this whole paragraph about aggrieved employees who feel comfortable doing so should directly inform the person engaging in the harassment. That seems counterintuitive, that someone would be uncomfortable to begin with, I would imagine. So, and, so telling them that they should tell the person to stop is kind of a, I don't know. I, I just find that to be an unnecessary paragraph altogether. I would imagine that if, if they, if they were being bothered, they would have already told someone to stop, and it would not have stopped, and they would have, it would have brought them to a complaint. But that's just, so, sorry.
So we can look into clarifying both of those further. I do know there are some requirements around the reporting of harassment and investigating that, and certainly around the discipline, disciplinary action, which is what that third paragraph under sexual harassment prohibited is referring to. under Sexual Harassment Prohibited is referring to. And keeping in mind, board policy should be kind of that umbrella guidance for us. The procedure should be what we develop to support that. And so some of that is spelled out for within our employee handbooks or within our contracts with employee groups. Heather, I don't know if you have additional information you might add to those questions?
I would just add that the second paragraph under making a complaint, I agree, it seems an obvious step, that if somebody's bothering you, you're gonna tell them to stop, but I have found that that is not always true. And so I think having the statement there doesn't mean that it will necessarily happen, but it gives permission to those feeling that way to take that first step. Because ideally, that's where we would like the concern to be worked out, is between the person that's feeling upset and the person that's causing them to feel upset. If that doesn't get resolved there, then there's a series of steps beyond that.
Okay.
Thank you. Do other board members?
Mr. Zine?
Yeah, I just had, I was going to mention that same 5:20. First of all, I was going to mention that I support the addition of gender identity to several of these policies. Appreciate that. Under making a complaint, the second sentence, employees who have witnessed or are aware of harassing conduct in the workplace are expected to promptly report such information. So this should go by lawyers and all of those things. When I read that, it feels a bit limiting to me in the sense that if someone is aware of, you know, potential harassing behavior, that's a lower standard than having witnessed it or being aware of actual harassing conduct. And I wonder if there's a way that we should include, you know, strong suspicion is the wrong, but, you know, evidence of potential harassing conduct or something along those lines. It's a little bit of a lower standard.
So let me just summarize to make sure I'm understanding. So not only if you've witnessed or are aware of harassing conduct, but if you suspect or have suspicion of harassment, that we would expect that there would be a report so we could investigate?
You have understood it correctly, and I think we're both struggling with what the right language would be, which is another good reason to ask the lawyers. But that is the sense of it. And then my other comment was on the 5:90, under general personnel. And I understand that this is referring specifically to abused and neglected child reporting, and I know that that is, there are a lot of legal requirements around that and whatnot, so all of the same lawyer comments apply. However, where we added the phrase "that does bodily harm..." Oh, we crossed it out? Okay, sorry. Good, that's what I was gonna support, so thank you. Good job. It's the comment I was gonna make.
Thank you, Mark.
Nope, got it.
Are there other comments or questions? Okay?
Oh, I have, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure where this would be covered. Maybe it's covered somewhere else, but I... You guys can hear me right? So under 5:30. Under 5:30. It looks like we have a fairly extensive background check procedure for employees. You know, we do a lot of construction in our facilities. Curious about what we do as far as background checks for other people who are on our facilities? Is that here, or is that somewhere else?
In my experience, there are some pretty thorough background checks that are required, but I have not asked that question here yet. I'm looking at Ellen to see if you have detailed information about that, or is that an area we'd like to get some additional information back to the board regarding those background checks for our construction employees is who I think, John, you're referring to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, and I would hate to limit it to just construction employees. Any other non-employees that are obviously not parents?
Vendors in our schools you're talking about.
That gotta be around.
Vendors, okay.
Yeah, so if we can gather that information, so we make sure we have all the information and then get back to you, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, then we will move on to our final public comment period. Is there anyone from the audience who would have liked to address the board? If so, please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests, use the microphone, state your name, your community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes if it's your first time addressing the board, or one minute if you've previously spoken.
Tracy Curti, I live in Glenview, Illinois. Two things. One, I meant to say it the last time. I want to make sure that my question to the Board of Education regarding where, when the teacher contract was published and where it's published is put in the minutes, that question? And secondly, I know you referred to committee or something that was discussed about the property tax appeal intervention. Also, maybe another request that committee meetings, I know you record them, are also published on the website, because not everyone's able to make an 8:00 AM meeting. That would be helpful, and I'd love to hear what was said about the property tax appeal process. I was expecting to see property tax appeals published, disclosed, if there are any that have been, as it was stated that we were gonna publicly disclose those. So just interested in what that conversation was, because that's what I thought you were referring to, and I didn't see any. So thank you. Again, welcome back.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, Nina Friedman again. Sorry that I spoke out of turn earlier. I didn't, I'm new to this, but you'll be seeing my face, so now I know for next time. I just wanted to follow up. I do appreciate the district's inclusion practices that have been put in place over the years and continue to be, and happy to hear about what is to come regarding moving forward with consequences or discipline or whatnot. But again, I think it's important that those two things are looked at as separate. Telling everyone that they're included and that we accept and that we want everybody to be in a community and have good relationships, that's one piece, but what happens when that doesn't happen, that's entirely separate. And I think it's imperative that when you do communicate what these disciplinary measures or the possible consequences are to the district and the community and the parents and the students, that you're explaining why. It's not just, oh, we have this new thing coming. It's because of the culture that's in our country and our district and specific things that have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a statement or comment at this time? If not, we'll continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated August 26, 2019. I move to approve the annual review of serious safety hazard findings. I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education policy 5:10, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. 5:20, workplace harassment prohibited. 5:30, hiring process and criteria. 5:35, compliance with Fair Labor Standards Act. 5:40, communicable and chronic infectious diseases. 5:60, expenses. 5:70, religious holidays. 5:80, court duty. 5:90, abused and neglected child reporting. And 5:100, staff development program and professional opportunities. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between June 18, 2019 and July 22, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $1,052,107.45. O&amp;M fund, $155,069.55. Debt services, $121,305. Transportation fund, $114,168.27. For a total all funds of $1,442,650.27. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between July 23, 2019 and August 26, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $521,762.98. O&amp;M fund, $202,559.38. Transportation fund, $68,697.14. Capital projects, $889,905. Tort fund, $98,988. For a total all funds of $1,781,912.50. I move to approve the manual checks issued between June 18, 2019 and July 22, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $736,401.41. O&amp;M fund, $204,113.47. Transportation fund, $4,603.44. Capital projects, $496,190. Tort fund, $7,352. For a total all funds of $1,448,660.32. I move to approve the manual checks issued between July 23, 2019 and August 26, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $537,940.67. O&amp;M fund, $9,318.86. Transportation fund, $8,568.80. For a total all funds of $555,828.33.
Would someone please, would someone please second the motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. A motion has been moved and seconded. Oh, the ayes have it. Motion carried. Next is adopting the annual budgets. Mr. Panzika?
I move to adopt the annual budget for Wmet Public Schools, Cook County, District 39, as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Adopting the resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer. Mr. Panzika?
I move to adopt the Wmet Community Special Education Agreement annual budget as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it. Motion carried. As moved, the consent agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to conference items. Is there any old business? Oh, did we miss one?
Can I interrupt for a sec? Sorry. I think you said the permanent inter-fund transfer and read the Wixie. Okay. But you read the Wixie budget.
That's the one we have to do next.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer?
Yes, you may. I adopt the attached, I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $4 million from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund as contained in the report.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Now, I believe, we'll move on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Mr. Zine?
Yeah, I wanted to bring to the board's attention an idea which came from John, which I thought was a spectacular idea for us to consider in the future, not tonight. But as the board may know, there is, in Illinois, no revenue recapture levy ability. So in other words, if we wind up giving refunds to constituents, to taxpayers, who've had their tax bill reduced, that money just comes out of our pocket. That's money that we could have spent on educating children. It's money which, you know, is part of our levy, but it winds up going to pay taxpayer. I have no problem with taxpayer fairness. I like it a lot, but I would like to be able to pay out that money to taxpayers without losing it for students. John's idea was, maybe this is something that we should talk to the IASB about, and it's too late this year, but we could propose a resolution that the IASB support the legislative efforts that are already going on to allow the school districts to have a tax recapture levy.
Great. Do other board members have any thoughts about this? No? Okay, from a procedural, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Mark. I appreciate, I'd like to think it was our idea that we had together in conversation, but I think, and you articulated it well, I think that given the changes that have happened in Cook County, the assessment that there's gonna be a lot of controversy happening and that this is a timely thing to look at.
So why don't we bring this to the next committee of the whole meeting? And talk about the hows and the whens? Is there other new business? Is there any good in welfare?
Yes. So during the course of running some errands in the village a few weeks ago, I stopped at a lemonade stand and started chatting up the young gentlemen that were running it. They're both rising fourth graders at McKenzie, and they were really excited to start school, and they were really excited about what they were gonna be doing in science this year, which is no small thing. So I want to just say thank you to all the work the teachers and the administrators and the staff are doing, that our kids are excited about school. It's great.
Other good in welfare?
I wanted to congratulate Dr. Kremisgully for completing, as he said, her first phase of the transition. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into it, and I think so far, things have been moving in a very good direction, and I wanted to congratulate you on completing your first school board meeting.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
So I just wanted to make the board aware, we, several of us received an invitation to take part in an event. Now I'm gonna have to put the glasses on, but this is an event that's held at North, Nutri at Northfield Campus, which is about digging deeply into race and racism through the prism of our own lives, work, and learning. It's a two-day seminar, takes place on Wednesday, September 4th, and Thursday, September 5th, and it's a $15 fee. So I think any of us could probably handle that, but it's been recommended to us by a community member who has been a leader in some of these efforts, and so I'd encourage anybody who is able to go to go.
Thank you. Any other good in welfare?
If I may, I don't know if this fits in this right category. I'm still learning. But I would like to just acknowledge and thank my administrative team for all of the work that they have put together in preparing our schools for welcoming staff and welcoming students back. It has been incredibly impressive to work with this amazing team of administrators and to learn from them and to work with them. So it's been really a lot of fun, but our principals are all now sitting in the back of the room, having worked with their staffs all day today, and I know they're eager for the welcome event tomorrow, but the administrators you see around the table and around the room as well, I just want to thank everyone and acknowledge for the board and our community all of their hard work.
Great, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and maybe speak for the board and wish you all a wonderful...
all a wonderful first day of school. With that, I would like, I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider, please?
Yes.
Johnson's ready? Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Any favor?
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes.
Karen Stone?
Yes.
We are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 8:34.